It's 25th, 2025, and I'd ask Gary Cardinal, our chaplain with our first responders, to lead us in the invocation be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let's pray. Well, we ask for your guidance and for your wisdom as this council meeting convenes today. Also, we thank you for the service of each council member and our mayor. We express appreciation, too, for our legal counsel and city clerk as well. We do ask for a unity of minds and hearts as matters of business are transacted today. Each department and employee works very hard on behalf of our city, and their efforts do not go unnoticed. We also don't take our first responders for granted and ask your protection over each one. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we would really appreciate that, and I'm gonna ask the clerk if she'll take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell.
Here.
Randy Weiss.
Here.
Jeff Prince.
Here.
Jamison Jenkins.
Here.
Clark Hopper.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to prove the minutes of the regular meeting of August 11, 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six is to correct the minutes from June 9, 2025. Item number three, John Deere CX-15, 10-foot rotary cutter, serial number shown. It was sold for $4,850. The minutes show 4,580, where just some numbers were transposed, and I'd ask that we enter that into the, into our minutes through a correction, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven is a personnel change to accept the resignation of Connor Bernard effective Monday, August 18 of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we accept that change.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight is a public hearing, and this public hearing is for a retail beer, off premises only, and retail table wine, off premises only license for Sutton Bridge store and storage located at 279 Sutton Bridge Road. The new owner is Shushant Singh and Dilip Llama, and I would ask if there's anybody that'd like to speak for or against this in a public hearing? Anyone at all? Anyone? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion that we, we accept this, this change.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any discuss, any opposed? Number nine is to purchase 22 Remington R24417 12-gauge shotguns, and that's overmolded shotguns with, with less-than-lethal shotgun kits on them, and that's for the police department from Ed's Public Safety Incorporated for $15,380.14. $14,000 of that will be paid from a 2023 block grant, and $1,380.14 will be paid from equipment and tools account, and that account number is shown, and I would entertain a motion that we, we do so.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 10 is to purchase the Vercotta camera system for the new recreation center on Lumley Road from L.E.K. Technology Group, LLC for $107,639.18. This is a purchase through the Omnia Partners Buying Cooperative and contract number R250206, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 11 is resolution number 25-19. It's to expend funds from the opioid settlement account to maximizing mental health incorporated for $25,000, and I would entertain a motion that we pass this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We actually have the Cochrins here. Would you guys like to come up and, and speak on, for maximize mental health?
She's divorced.
Okay.
You'll have to help me start leading the session.
Just give your name and, and address for our, for our public record.
Kelly Cochran.
Turn that mic on. There you go.
Kelly Cochran, 616 Bellevue Drive, Gadsden, Alabama. And my husband keeps up with the bookkeeping more so than I do, but I know that to date, we are at 3,700 counseling, mental health counseling sessions. And just tonight, y'all, I received a phone call, well, a text. I told her that I could not talk, but I received a text from my mother who is desperate for help with her son, and I told her we could talk afterwards. So please know that we will be good stewards of this, and we're just, we're overwhelmed, and we just take, we know that it's great responsibility, and we choose our counselors with a lot of prayer and intentionality. So just know that we will be very responsible, and I just, words seem, there's not words to say, but I'll just tell you, it took our breath away, and we are so thankful for each one of y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you. We appreciate you so much. Number 12 is resolution number 25-20. That's adopting transportation plan pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act of 2019-2, and I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution.
So moved.
Is there, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 13 is ordinance number 609. That's a public hearing. It's an ordinance to regulate the sale and distribution of consumable vapor products within the city of Rainbow City, to provide a license tax thereof, and to enforce the provisions thereof, to provide penalties for the violation thereof, and to provide for the use thereof. And this will be, I'll open it up for a public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak for or against this, you'd be able to come up. Heather, I think you might wanna engage us a little bit with explanation, if you don't mind. Could you come up and just give the council a little bit more background as to how we got to this? Just give your name and your position for the public record.
It's on.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. It's on. You're live.
Testing, testing. It's on.
Yeah.
Is it on?
It is on.
This is in result of a House bill that's recently passed. It was, let me get notes. It was House Bill number 529, and the state has given us municipalities an opportunity to levy our own tax if we want to. We have to have that done for October the 1st if we want to do that. The tags will not take effect until October the 1st of 2026. So, but I think it's gonna give us an opportunity to, it's gonna service us better, I think, if we can collect it ourselves than letting the state collect it, because by the time all the percentages are broke down of, you know, of who gets what, it's just gonna be benefiting us better if we can collect it ourselves.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. I need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a vote, including me?
Anita Bedwell.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take that vote, including me?
Anita Bedwell.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 14 is ordinance number 610. It's authorizing the exchange of real property with SMD Steel, LLC, and the Lumley Road Research and Industrial Park and the establish, the establishment and vacation of easements. And I would entertain a motion that we introduce the ordinance as read.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number, also, we need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote and include me?
Anita Bedwell.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Motion to, to adopt.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a vote, including me as well?
Anita Bedwell.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Just, just for some clarification, or maybe just for some public information, this is, this is an opportunity for us to do a property exchange. We had already sold this property to SMD and did a closing a couple of months ago, and this is out in our new industrial park, and they are the, a fabricating company that's coming here that'll eventually bring us about 150 well-paying jobs. They needed to make some adjustments in, in the outer boundaries of this so that they could accommodate a bigger building, which is always a better opportunity for the city. And so we were able to do that. Actually thankful that Anita and I had gone over this map and had been able to carve out for other different industries, and we had left these two lots, and it happened to be the two lots that they needed so badly, and it allows for us to be able to allow them to move forward and be willing to break ground, probably looking like in September. So I really do appreciate the council being willing to make that property swap. Number 15 is the presentation of certificate of accreditation, and we're gonna ask Camp Yancey, our police chief, he'd come up, and he has someone here that would be speaking on the behalf of the chiefs. And if you'd, sir, if you'd just give your name for our public record.
Yes, sir. My name's Marcus Wood. I have the pleasure of serving as the chief of police for the city of Jacksonville. Also have the pleasure to serve as the immediate past president for the Alabama Chiefs Association, so I'm here on their behalf tonight. So I had the opportunity to work with some excellent chiefs in police departments, and Chief Yance and his staff happened to be one of those. So during my tenure as being the president, we wanted to create an accreditation process for police departments across the state. In doing that process, we wanted to create a baseline to where police departments could have basic standards that we thought even the two-man departments up to the 500-man departments could meet, and so we would better have a basic standard, professional standards, across the state of Alabama for police departments, and we were able to get that done. And so what I can say is Chief Yance and his staff not only met that baseline, but they went above and beyond with their policies to get to this point in getting their accreditation, and so we've been able to award them this accreditation. During the assessment process that I had an opportunity to look over as the president, again, I said they, you know, not only did they meet that baseline and have everything in place, but they went above and beyond that, and so I'd like to award them with this accreditation on behalf of the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Says that the Rainbow City Police Department, having demonstrated its compliment to police excellence by living up to the progressive standards to ensure that police services are delivered within the community at the highest level of professionalism and integrity, reflects the best professional practices in the areas of police management, administration, operations, and support services, is hereby recognized in the credit agency for a period of five years upon the recommendation of the Alabama Law Enforcement Accreditation Committee, and we awarded it on the 29th day of July, 2025, on behalf of myself as the president and our executive director, Agent Bramwood.
Thanks so much.
(applause)
I don't get her, I guess. Thanks, sir. I appreciate you coming up. Call back to you.
Good.
Chief, you don't say anything?
Yep.
Well, I said chief, and everybody in the world's on it.
Chief Wood, thank you very much for, for coming all the way from Jacksonville and presenting that. We really appreciate that. Yeah, so let me go back to first about the shotguns. I appreciate you guys proving all that and letting us move forward without our shotguns or desperate needed to get replaced for less lethal use. The accreditation, the whole team deserves that certificate. We actually, when I was at the chief conference, I bought accreditation stickers going back of all of our patrol cars, so all of our patrol cars should now have those, because we're very proud, very proud to display that and to let, you know, the state of Alabama know that we're among the first, you know, five to 10 agencies that got, got on board with that program really quick and, and just went with it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that's the thing about our police department, is they are a trailblazing police department. They get out in front of opportunity and do very well, and they represent this city in an incredible way. Is there anyone from the public that would like to, to speak? Anyone at all? We're giving you your chance. Okay, and I'm, we'll move on to the council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Hopper.
He did number 16.
Nope. Did I miss 16?
Just get right through it over it.
Oh, yeah, I guess I did. But number 16 is sponsorship request, and that's the 2025 Advancing Women to the Top Conference, which obviously I don't qualify for, so, but what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation to the council that we do you a goal sponsorship, $1,000.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank y'all for the correction. Always feels good when y'all tell me I can't do much. We'll move on. No public comments, and we'll move on to Mr. Hopper.
Just to echo what the chief's talking about with our police department and their camera systems and things like that, I just, yesterday sat in on a session with the National League of Cities, been on with them. They did a class trying just to get cities just to do the basics, and we're really far advanced in that, and that's a credit to you, Cap, and I appreciate that. I think the only thing I'm gonna bring up is tomorrow. Tomorrow's election day, and what people have got to understand is Fox don't matter, CNN don't matter, red don't matter, blue don't matter, DC don't matter, Montgomery don't matter. Only thing that matters tomorrow is Rainbow City. This is the only form of government where you're going to be able to reach out to your candidate. Both of them are here, so whoever wins tomorrow, whether it's Chris or Randy. I know my wife cannot stand it when I went to win Dixie, because I was gonna have top politics. Somebody's gonna know why this is being built and that's being built. That's the beauty of local government, but this is where your opportunity every four years to vote for people that you can communicate with, not a handler, not a secretary, not nobody else. You get to talk to that candidate, whether it's at a store, a phone, or you go by their house, because pretty much, especially where everybody knows where you live, and they'll knock on your door. This is the only form of government, level of government that you can do that in, and it's the most important, because it affects you everyday life. You're not waiting on money to trickle down from DC or slide up nowhere from Montgomery. We spend our money, we're good stewards of our money, and we take care of the people, and they said this one. So get out to vote tomorrow. I want it to be a big turnout, and I hope everybody comes out and votes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanna start out talking about our police department. It's a really unique situation to be in, to be in law enforcement as a career and a sit on city council, and not to speak ill against any other municipality, but I think even specifically in Alabama this year, we've seen what can happen to municipalities that have an ill-managed police department, and that's something that we do not have to worry about at Rainbow City. And law enforcement is a unique situation, especially for a mayor, because there are a lot of aspects of the police department where the mayor can know what's going on and does, but there's also a lot of aspects where, in some situations, the people who are doing that work are the only people who know about it. And so for us to be able to sit up here and know that the functionality and the efficiency of our police department is not a concern is something that I hope we're all very, very grateful for. Second thing I want to talk about is maximizing mental health. I just wanna say that we really appreciate y'all. We have zero doubt how well utilized that money is gonna be. Nobody on this council has any doubt about that whatsoever. I told a story the last time y'all were here about my grandfather, and Claire, actually, two Sundays ago, I think it was two Sundays ago, may have been further along than that, but we get the privilege to go to church with these two fine folks, and Claire said, "Every time that you hug them, you always tell them, and they always tell you that you love them." And I said, "Well, that's just how it is. That's just the kind of people that they are," and I just appreciate your character. That's all I have.
Ms. Bedwell.
Well, and because of that character, and because of who you are, oh, sorry, thank you. Because of that character and because who you are, your program will go a long way. Be very blessed. So thank you for doing what you do, and we are excited to watch you, your program grow, and things to happen in a positive manner. So we know you'll be great leaders and administrators of that. Our police department is awesome. We came in upstairs today for our work session at 3:30, and all over the TV was Rainbow City, all kinds of camera spots that, we have cameras everywhere now in the city. It's kinda sad that it has to be that way, but isn't it awesome that we're able to do that? And thank you to our police department and camp for getting, for, for handling that. The pickleball court, Williams Avenue over at Park Lane, the intersection here down at Vivian Maddox, there's just multitude of cameras everywhere, and I'm just really excited about those and, and the safety that it will bring to the residents here and the people visiting here as well. So, but I'm just, just very excited about all that. Tomorrow is a big day, and we do need to just reflect, just, just for a minute, if that's all that you have, on the fact that we have the freedom to go and vote. So go and vote, everybody. Take that freedom and, and respect the people who fought for that and who gave us that freedom, and take a, take a minute out of your day and go and vote. And I know that whatever the result is, that it will be in God's hands for it to be that way, and we will move forward, and it's gonna be an exciting time as we, Rainbow City moves. So that's about all I have, leaving you some extra time.
Mr. Prince.
No. Thank you, Mayor. I've got quite a bit tonight, but I'm gonna try to talk really fast, okay? So y'all keep up. They kid me a little bit about talking. The police department, we say this quite often, best, no doubt, and led by the best, no, no offense, chief, in Jacksonville. I know y'all have a great department as well, but we're a little bit proud of Chief Yancey and his department and what they've been able to accomplish. We're very happy to help them in any way. As Councilwoman Bedwell said, no riding dirty through Rainbow City now, because you're on camera. Smile. So that's not, it is a sad thing that it comes to that, but we're very proud to have that. SMD metal the steel, the lot swap, that's going to be such a huge and have a huge impact on our community with some really fine-paying jobs right up front and room to grow. So that is exciting to see that kick off. We're looking forward to the shovels in the dirt for that, for sure. My wife and I rode around Saturday afternoon just a little bit, looking at the fields, Vivian Lee, and the turf about to go down, getting excited. I don't even have, I got a grandson. Be a few years before he can play tee ball, I guess, but man, if my kid had a, had that opportunity 20 years ago. And, and it's just exciting, that, the community center, the challenger center, to see all of the things that are going on in the city, and it's not just us. It's, we're just put in a position to help things along sometimes, and we have a mayor that is very forward-thinking, and I'm very honored to be a part of this group up here. Maximizing mental health, David and Kelly Cochran, my friends from, we're not gonna tell how many years ago, a long, long time. Two of the finest people you will ever know. I thank the world of you guys and love you, and I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, those that really need help are getting help because of your faithfulness, and God is faithful to those that are faithful to Him. And so thank you both so much, and we're happy to be able to help you in any amount. So thank you for being here tonight, too. And lastly, tomorrow, it was five years ago tonight, the mayor just happened before we went live to be talking about that. It was five years ago tonight. We were all excited, nervous. I don't know if I was a little of both, but I remember it like it was yesterday. It is a right, it's not a God-given right, it's a right that people fought and died for, for us to be able to get out and vote. So Chris and Randy, I know y'all are the only two on the ballot, and I hope, like Councilman Hopper said, I hope we have a huge turnout tomorrow for you guys. Looking forward to it, and I know whatever happens, it will be the right thing, so we can't go wrong. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
First of all, Mr. Minn Cothran, thank you for everything, Cochran, thank you all for everything you do. There is a deficit of mental health counseling in our country, and it's one of the biggest problems, if not the biggest problems, and everything relates to it, from crime to drug use to homelessness, and it's people like you who put yourself out there that we're more than honored to be able to assist in whatever way we can, and thank you so much for what you do. Definitely. And thank you again for, Chief Yance, I think what you've accomplished is amazing, and we really appreciate the work you guys have done. I got to witness firsthand our fire department at work a couple of days ago. I'm, I'm driving up to City Hall, and all of a sudden, it looked like the, the sign at Harvest Field Church was on fire, but it wasn't. The, a food truck had caught on fire, and it was just billowing, and we couldn't even get around. I was trying to pull over like I could have done anything, but anyway, but I'm, I'm not kidding. Within two and a half, three minutes, they had the fire out. And what was unique, and besides just watching our heroes, the fire department and people that worked with them, the gentlemen who were driving the truck were working so hard to get that propane tank off the front. It was, it was absolutely, when I say watching, it wasn't like rubbernecking. We're trying to move and adjust, but to see the people of this city come together, whether it be civil servants or whether it be just average people who are doing their job, was, was something to see, and I really appreciate the fire department. I know the police department helped with that as well. All of our first responders, I know, Philip, it's a busy time for you, and we appreciate what you're going through to get everything set up for our facilities. I echo all the other councilmen's comments. It's, it's just a pleasure to see, and for our grandkids, and like I say, my, my son missed it by a year, but he did get to play on the soccer field, so we're excited about that. But having said all that, I also wanna echo all the comments about the election. I think we both worked really hard at this, and somebody said, "Well, it's a shame you don't have to work that hard." No, it's not. People have fought for the right to do this, and, and, you know, most countries, you don't have it like this. There's a lot of countries that have elections, but usually there's one name on the ballot instead of two, or there's security guards watching which, you had to put your slip in a particular box, and they watch which box you put it in. We live in a free country where you're free to make those decisions, and there's nothing greater than that in the secular world, to be able to choose your own government and for that government to serve the people, and for that, I'm honored to serve, and I appreciate each and every one of you. God bless you, and I give time to the mayor.
Tuesday, August 26 is our municipal election, as they've already spoken about. Our polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It'll be at the community center here next to City Hall, and also the Riddlesbend Fire Station. So just to make sure that that's, that's a clarification that needs to be made, because we will have some change in polling places in the future. But it'll be at the community center and the Riddlesbend Fire Station, so it's the, it's the polling places that you've been utilizing over the last few years. Monday, September 1. Oh, also, make sure that you bring your voter ID. Bring an ID so that you can make sure that you get signed up, and we can do that, and you don't have to go home and come back for it. If you're a late voter, we wanna make sure that you don't miss your opportunity. Monday, September 1, 2025, City Hall will be There's no doubt, very proud of our police department. I mean, we, these guys are just killing it. They are a proactive, community-oriented police department and that's with the leadership of Chief Yancey and his staff members and Officer Higgins being here right now, I mean, and Officer Pell. These guys are working to make sure that we stay safe. And I think that just going through an accreditation process, asking that someone outside would come in and test them says way more about them than they can ever say about themselves. That's a quiet professional that's willing to say, come and look at us and tell us if we're doing something wrong. I can promise you this, people don't do that in their profession. And I'm thankful for the police department. Thank you, Marcus, for being here. Chief, thank you for being here. It means the world to this city. And to the Cochrins, thank y'all for what you do. We're going to continue to support you and I think you've heard that from everybody in every position up here. Just exercise your right to vote. There's no doubt there have been men and women that have suffered and died for that right. Get out there and vote. I mean, it's your opportunity to change whatever you see needs to be changed and encourage, you know, our neighbors around that are in municipal elections. Clark said it very well. This is where the rubber meets the road. There's no, there's no color, there's no distinguishment of party. You know, when you come here, you get a chance to walk into your house and say, this is what I would like to have. And you get to exercise that vote. One half of the people in this room that are in election are going to fail tomorrow. That means one person's going to win. And in that case, whichever that might be, you need to understand that your chance then is to pick up and go. If you're, if you're on the losing side of this, and somebody has to be, as bad as that sounds, it's your chance to reengage. And reengage in the sense of trying to find a board or a committee or some other way, even if it's in youth sports, and I know that both of you guys are involved in that, go out and find a way to reengage yourself into the process. And I appreciate that. And with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Hey, what are we doing? Canvas?
Tuesday afternoon.
We used to, we gotta go move down, right?
Uh, I think y'all do.
Well, I got an email on mine.
Is that right? I don't know where you go.
Is that one of those little conferences?
Oh, Public Safety.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they call it that.